We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom, here.
Ms. Lehman, here.
Ms. Lewis.
Mr. Nally.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from a regular meeting held August 11th, 2025, please?
Slow move.
Motion by Ms. Lehman, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Ms. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved. Moving on to legislative report.
Ah, yes. Just gonna give a short verbal presentation at this meeting and then at the next meeting, I'll have the information that is sent out by the different organizations. Couple of things, the governor's work group has been meeting. They have that end of September deadline and a couple of the issues that, three issues that they're working on, which I'm not sure that I saw that totally as, all these as his directive. One is cybersecurity, just indicating that there's an organization, Cyber Ohio, that has already done one training and there's another one coming up. If we had people attend that.
There was a very large training with Nuaca or A site and some of us did participate in that. There are some changes that we need to bring. I believe it's House Bill 96 that got that information.
Okay, thank you. There's also working on, they're talking about the property tax work group. One of the things that they have been concentrating on is the cash balance discussion and it was interesting at the legislative liaison webinar today, they mentioned that the recommendation that's coming from that group is that it be at 100% level versus 30 and 50 and all those numbers. And basically they're saying, you know, at this point in time, why would we be penalizing our school districts that may come into some money through maybe like the pipelines and and whatever, whatever opportunities and it also affects future planning for levies and, you know, financing our districts. So, you know, I thought that was a good thing that they're kind of pushing at least in that direction. They're also discussing the types of levies. This group's coming across, apparently they're indicating that they feel that emergency levies might still be needed in some districts and they kind of said that maybe we just need to call it a different name, but I think really what they're saying is there might be a need for some type of other levy. I don't think that affects us because we're not doing that, but throughout Ohio, they're taking a look at that. One positive thing I think is the Fair School Funding Group will be attending their meeting. I guess they meet every Thursday, the governor's work group and they're going to be attending this Thursday and making a presentation about fair school funding and several other issues related to that. I'm sure they'll touch on vouchers and, you know, those types of things. And realizing that that group, you know, is, does not have any elected officials on that right now, that I think there might be one or two former legislators that the governor has put on there, but this group would then, whatever their findings are, will have to go back to whether through the report or presentation, will have to convince Senate and House why these are good things. So it's really, in my mind, it kind of just adds another layer of people making recommendations. And so, you know, and I, I'm not sure that we've seen that our legislators right now want to be giving, given a lot of input on direction. They haven't, you know, really followed through with a lot of those things. There's one new proposal that's out there. It's called House Bill 113 and that creates a public expenditure database and that would be for all entities that are receiving public tax dollars and the way it's, I'm not sure exactly what the word, use of that will be, but they've already made in there one exception and that is that like the private schools that are getting some tax money for the vouchers and stuff that they are excluded from having to meet that directive. So I, you know, it, you know, it's, it's definitely a concern. And then the final one that I would mention is HJR, House Joint, Joint Resolution Number Six is to amend our state constitution and I think we'll be hearing more about that in the near future as to what they want to put into that bill. That sounds like that's something in the works. But again, you know, when you start kind of messing with the state constitution, you know, that can bring up a lot of other miscellaneous issues and whereas like right now, you know, they're under the directive, I think. I'm trying to remember the date, if it's the end of September or end of, but to put out the new congressional map and with the mapping and there, so there's directives out there for that has to be done. If the House and Senate do not agree on the new mapping for the congressional districts, then what ends up happening, it kicks back to the governor, the, there's a committee, I can't remember the name of it, there's so many of them, but it kicks back to the committee that I think put that together originally and the governor sits on that one. So it's hard to know, you know, exactly way, what way he will push for that to go. So that's just kind of a verbal update of some of the things that are going on in particular with the state of Ohio right now. So that's all I had.
Thanks, Tom. Next, no walk-on items tonight?
Thank you.
Next is the community section. No one's here to address the board, so we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Good evening, board members. Just a quick shout out for our registration department of Daniel Garza, Amy Purney and Susan King. We are averaging 40 to 45 appointments a week for the last three weeks. These individuals are working super hard to acknowledge our families who are coming to Fremont City Schools, need to get their students registered. We are attempting to get everyone on board and ready to go for, up to date. So we're ready when school starts beginning tomorrow. But I will tell you, we have 30 appointments scheduled this week. They are trying very hard to work around family schedules. They are starting their day 6:00, 6:30 in the morning and going sometimes to eight o'clock at night, just truly to meet the needs of families of when they are available and what that could look like. So cannot speak highly enough about them right now. They've just done a fantastic job of answering the calls to our families. I did also want to just take a moment. I'd sent my first parent square notification this afternoon at five o'clock, so I hope that all of our members in our community also receives that. If not, please make sure that you have all of your information and final forms up to date and ready to go because that's where all of that is pulled from. But I would just like to recap that so that everyone is on the same page. So school does start tomorrow in Fremont City Schools and we are very excited about that. And truly best meet the needs of our students. That is why we do this. This will be a very crazy week in Fremont City Schools and we do it for one reason and that is truly to support our students and make sure that we can give them the very best start that we can. But with that stated with for the why, it does get a little crazy. So tomorrow on Tuesday, August 26th, grades one through five, grade six only and grade nine only at middle school and high school. And that is again, so that our sixth graders and our ninth graders can get a lay of the land, figure out their locker and their schedule and walk through. And it also gives our teachers and our administration a chance to just really share some information with them and give them the very best start to these two new buildings that are big and new to them. On Wednesday, August 27th, all of those people that came on Tuesday have to come back. So they all come again, but this time on the 27th, we are going to add the first half of our kindergartners. So we stagger them in. So if your last name begins A to L, you come on Wednesday and you won't come on Thursday and you will come back again on Friday. Also on Wednesday, we start to bring in our preschool students. We are going to add in our seventh and eighth graders to this building and our 10th through 12th graders at the high school. On Thursday, August 28th, again, we'll have some preschool kids. We will add in those kindergartners whose last name begins with M to Z. So we only bring in half the group on Wednesday and half the group on Thursday so that they, that room just doesn't feel quite as crowded. Then on Friday, the 29th of August, for the last day of the week, we will have all of our students kindergarten through grade 12 in our buildings. So that will be the first day. All the kindergarten kids will come together. They'll be able to see their whole classroom together. So really, truly, I know that it's a piecemeal and I know that sometimes that gets confusing for families, but really, really with the best intentions of how can we break it down and support our students so that they are not nervous and that they get a really good start. So very, very exciting for that. At your seats this evening, you have the new district calendar. Those are going out to the buildings as well. So our families can look for those at home. So a lot of great faces in there and a lot of good information. So I'm excited to share that yet again. It looks wonderful this year. Any questions on the start of the school or any of those pieces?
Sounds like a good plan.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Price, if you're good, I'll continue.
Yes.
Hey, item number one, I would ask for the consideration of the approval of some donations. Many of these items have been donated to support our staff members as we start this school year.
Can I get a motion to approve item one, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Item number two, we did have a typo in there. That should read not to exceed $10,000 for that contract. That is for Dalton Harp. He assists us with our digital media for our athletic groups. So we missed a zero there.
Can I get a motion to approve item two, please?
Slow move.
Motion by Ms. Lehman, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Item number three, this is a little bit of a change with some of that retirement pieces that we saw at the end of last spring. So I would ask that you approve the contract with Michael DeBrunz. He will be assisting the athletic department in laundering all of our cloth services for this, this portion of the year and that will be for Fremont City Schools and SJCC combined. And this is kind of a joint effort between the two school districts.
Can I get a motion to approve item three, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Item number four, I'd ask that you approve the contract with the Association for Private Counseling. This is not a new entity to us, just a renewal for the start of the school year.
Again, motion to approve item four, please.
Slow move.
Motion by Ms. Lehman, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Item number five, I have several quotes here with a resolution that for you to approve. This will get our Safety Connector Project up and running. I did send you out earlier today, a plan, a tutorial of what that looks like. Can you see those renderings as to what this is going to look like combining, or I'm sorry, connecting our current Ross High School building and our current natatorium building?
Can I get a motion to approve item five, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion?
When do you, when do you think they're gonna be finished with the project?
Our goal is to, we are about a month behind right now. They will be breaking ground very soon to get started. We do have two timeframe goals that we are hoping for. We are hoping to be under roof by November-ish so that students that are be going back and forth between the pool and the building will at least still be covered. That is our goal. And we are still hoping for end of project to be spring of 2026.
Nice.
All right.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Oops, sorry. Ms. Lehman? Man. Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you very much. Item number six, if you just consider the approval to grant a high school diploma to our student Hayden Sampson, please.
Can I get a motion to approve item six, please?
Slow move.
Motion by Ms. Lehman, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Moving on to staff events this evening, item numbers, beginning with item number seven, with the resignation of Tiffany King. I do have an adjustment for item number eight. I would like to remove that asterix. Late in the day on Friday, August 22nd, all materials came in for Katrina Crowell, who will be joining us here at FMS as our school nurse. So I would like to change the TBD to be effective H2525 for today as she will start. Item number nine, we have a list of certified substitutes in A and B, we have support staff substitutes. In item number 10, we have many staff who are going to support our students by doing a little bit extra with one of those additional supplemental contracts. Item number 11, we have some additional outside individuals that are joining us in the district to do some of those key volunteering positions as well as some supplemental support pieces. Item number 12 is a status change. Item number 13 includes all of the items for our teacher mentors. These are individuals, these are veteran teachers and staff who are going to support our novice teachers. The law did recently just change. There was, used to be a mandate that you had to do this for so many years before you could get full licensure. That law did change. We do still in the district believe very strongly that supporting our novice staff and attaching those mentors, those veterans teachers that can really help them pays off immensely. So we would like to continue with that project and those are listed there in item 13.
Can I get a motion to approve items seven through 13, please?
Slow move.
Motion by Ms. Lehman, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally, any discussion?
One quick question. Why did the state change that on the mentoring thing? Because that was such a hardcore piece that they wanted to push and now it's going by the wayside?
It is. And it actually started to dissolve a few years ago. It used to be a paid component. Those dollars were reimbursed from the state level to the local districts and those dollars then went away. And we as a district said, you know what, we're still, we believe in this program and we're going to support our staff and they still had to maintain year one, year two, year three, before they could get that full licensure piece. This is the final piece of that and those requirements have gone away. We still believe it's best practice.
The sad thing is it's such a nominal cost for the benefit and, you know, the higher the quality of the teachers that we create, the better, you know, our students are going to learn. And so it's, it's sad that something like that is not continued to be supported by the state.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, in any business, if you have a brand new employee who's never done a job before, especially straight out of college, you have someone that helps them. They don't know everything. They don't know their way around. So now you're allowing, hopefully districts hold on to this piece to help their staff because otherwise you've got college kids coming in and they don't have a clue.
Don't have a clue. And, you know, it starts with things as basic as where do I stash my lunch and how do I take attendance?
Yeah.
To how do I enter grades and where do I get some ideas for lesson planning and, you know, all of the instructional pieces and the supports of the tools in their classroom that they have access to. So, and you can see those different dollar amounts even, we expect to have to support them a little bit more in year one and year two, as opposed to as they get farther along, they need a little less support. And so the work becomes a little less, but I agree with you. It's, it's such a worthwhile component.
And it's usually the exact opposite of what the state does. This is a good thing that they implemented and they're taking it away instead of implementing something that means nothing and keeping it on forever. But hey, you know.
Whatever we know.
Yeah. All right. Roll call, please. Sorry.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Beginning with item number 14, 15 and 16, we just have some different substitute wage pieces there. Item number 14 will be our administrative staff substitute wage, please.
All right, can I get a motion to approve item 14, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Item number 15 is the certified staff substitute wage for this school year, please.
Can I get a motion to approve item 15, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion, sorry? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Item number 16 now is our support staff substitute wage and that was included also for you to take a look at.
Can I get a motion to approve item 16, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Final item for me this evening, item number 17. Ms. Miller is making a request to go to a conference in September. I know that when she does go away, she, there's just so much that she learns and brings back and shares with the rest of us. As the EMIS coordinator, we want to make sure that she has all the information that she needs.
Nobody wants to take her place, do they?
No one wants to take her place. And, and the more accurate we are with our EMIS recordings and what that report looks like, then the more accurate our dollars flowing in. So it's very, very important.
Can I get a motion to approve item 17?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Pr- Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Report of the Treasure.
Good evening. Couldn't even tell you what I did last week anymore. I don't remember. It's just been so crazy with all of our opening day activities. I believe I got up and talked in front of a bunch of people, tried and forget that if possible.
500 of your favorite friends.
Yeah.
I would just say as one of those people, we were totally enthralled.
I thought you did a great job. You did too.
I remember correctly, I may have made a joke about going over all legislation that was hitting and I had a bunch of people with looks on their faces of, oh dear God, please don't. So, but that is normal. That day went out of, off with a hitch and then we had all of our other normal opening day activities last week. And for those that don't know, it takes a lot to get a school district ready for the start of the school year. My office isn't as busy, but it trickles down to us and we see everybody else running around like crazy people like we do other times of the year. Tonight, also have on the agenda is the financials for the first month in for the school year. Looking wonderful. And as I end up saying a lot of times, a lot of the differences between this year and last year has to do with timing of when real estate settlements hit. Sometimes they don't all hit at the same time every year. It just depends on collections and when the auditor gets them to us. So, you know, there might be an ink, a large increase of this year versus last year and it's just how collections ran. We won't really know until, I did just get our final settlement. So I will know in the August report how we actually did on the collection this year versus last year. Interest rates are falling, so we are always going to project that that interest revenue that we have seen a large increase over the last couple of years, it's going to start going down. And you'll see, this year we did, for the month of July, it is down from last year. But like I said, finally, those rates are starting to go down. So we're going to see that, we're expecting to see that continuing downward trend. State funding is holding steady. We won't see the increase that we were given with the state budget until the end of November. So those state funding payments will rain relatively, remain relatively the same. This is the first month I get, I wouldn't have to say anything about wages and benefits being down due to S or write-off, but you know, I just missed saying it. So I'll throw that in there. It's for expenses, there's not too many huge changes, just kind of our normal, our purchase services is up a little bit. Our purchase services is up a little bit. But that's due to some of our contracts went up for purchase services as everything else did. Supplies are up. We're seeing inflation just like everyone else. So not too much to report back on of the financials for the month of July. Can't believe I'm already in fiscal twenty-six already. That's crazy. But here we are. So if I can ask for your guys' approval on that one item, and then you won't have to hear me talk the rest of the night, pretty much.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve item eighteen, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes. Oh, Lehman.
Yeah, sure.
You knew what you meant.
Let's try that again.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes. Motion's approved. All right, moving on to board member communications. Lori.
Well, thank you for all the donations and congratulations to Hayden Sampson on his diploma. You know, an exciting and well deserved. And great, welcome back to all the kids tomorrow, for the most part. And with the exception of a couple of grades here and there, but yeah, that and all the teachers. And I know my grandson's excited. So but I hope tomorrow is a really good day and it goes off without a hitch and everybody smooth.
Laura.
Denise. And this is Parkhurst down there, Ms. Parkhurst. I hope you guys have a great year ahead. I know you guys are putting a lot of hard work over the summer. Your whole offices, you were speaking earlier. You guys are going to have a good year. Hard work always pays off. Welcome back, kids. I hope you have a good year too. Take just take time to get to know your friends and make new friends and enjoy your classes, your teachers, everything that's out there. Teachers, I wish you the best of luck. And honestly, I hope that more parents get involved this year too. And they take time to go to community events and you know, the special performances and stuff that their children are into, grandchildren, just be there for them, be present for them. I believe that makes a big difference. So good luck, everybody.
Oh, yeah. Attended the football game Friday night. It was a close game. And you know, I think I'm sure the, the coach is preparing them and getting ready for Sandusky this week. And just want to encourage everybody to, you know, be, be good fans. Cheer, you know, cheer, cheer for our team. You know, and just be safe. And you know, I think as Mrs. Lewis kind of would say, just, you know, be smart and don't do anything dumb. And just enjoy the fact that you're there to, at a school football game. Also, I going with what Ms. Lehman had brought up with the district. I think, you know, it was obvious at the opening session that there's been a lot of work put into prepping, prepping for the school year. And you know, just want to commend, you know, everybody involved in the district. And you know, from, you know, the shiny floors. You know, I mean, just the facilities look great. Just encourage the kids and everybody to continue to keep, keep up on those. And I think they'll have a great educational year. And you know, when you talked, when Mrs. Hurt talked earlier about kind of that, that break in the schedule and half the kids. I think it's just very creative ways to acclimate the kids without the pressure of everybody, you know. And so I think, you know, there's some, some good thought that goes into that. And then Mrs. Parkhurst, I think when you mentioned earlier about the giving the big, long legislative report, I think the only thing that would have been more scary is if you would have told them that I was going to do that. So that's all I had. That's all I had.
Okay, thanks. Well, congratulations to the football team. It's always, I'm a football guy, so high school football starting is always a good time of year. So a good win on Friday to beat Columbia. And it's been a couple of years, a couple, three years maybe since we won. So now we've got Sandusky, one of our rivals. So another good time to come out with a win and let's be two and O after this week. And good job to all of our sports teams that have been going on. Everybody's had a good start. Things are going well. Opening meeting in the first week of staff being here and stuff, I think, has been really good. So hopefully that's a good start of the year for everybody. Also, congratulations to any of our students that had anything to do with the fair, whether they had an animal there, a project, if they were working the fair, whatever it was. A lot of kids put in a lot of work on stuff that they do, whether it's raising an animal to show or doing a project or working there or whatever. I have no problem with child labor. You can ask my daughters. They work at the cookie shop probably earlier than what they wanted to. So I think it, it really, that's a commitment for them that they are putting in that hard work at an early age. Sometimes grade school, raising sheep or cows or whatever it might be. That's a lot of work for a whole year to get them ready for the fair. So good job to, to our students there. So with that, there's no reason for executive session. So I would ask for a motion of adjournment, please. Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.[1760.07]